Well, hey, realize once your name is called, you know, you'll walk down, you'll stand there like where there is, where the clock is.
Oh, yes.
You'll stand there and take the audience and, of course, they'll go to the audience and think about me, then you stay there until it's all done. And then, and you take the big picture.
Okay.
I know you said you were going to be there because I just tried.
Okay.
So, I'm not sure.
Yeah. Me?
You can be a stand-in. So.
I like the next section.
Yeah, just the next section. And it just makes it easy.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thanks for coming out.
That's what I like to hear.
She really is.
Your teachers are great. I came for National Education Week, right? I was the only bear that came. She said, she says, Mom, nobody came. I'm like, well, that's on them. But no, I'll give you guys scooters.
Yeah? Good.
Yeah.
Hi, good evening. I'd like to call the November 22nd, 2022 meeting of the Methacton School District Board of Directors to order. Dr. Zerbi will introduce the students next.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, we'd like you to all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have Skyview Upper Elementary School student Tajin Zumini to lead us in the pledge.
Hi, I'm Tagen Zumini, and I'm a sixth grader in Skyview Upper Elementary, and today I'll be leading the Pledge of Allegiance. Stand up, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may now return to your seat. Enjoy your reading.
Excellent. And next, we have Natalia Cordero to talk about her profile of Skyview Upper Elementary School.
Hi, my name is Natalia, and I'm in sixth grade at Skyview. I'm here to tell you why I love my school. I love Skyview. Teachers are friendly and help me in any way they can. Additional to the academics, there's time to socialize, which is important to balance out my school life.
Thank you to both of those students. Turn it over to Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. Notice of executive session. There was an executive session meeting of the board virtually on November 7th, 2022, for the purpose of holding an information and strategy session related to matters of collective bargaining with the Methacton Educational Support Professional Association. There was an executive session meeting of the board held on November 22nd, 2022, just prior to this meeting, for the purpose of receiving legal advice from the solicitor on a matter of personnel involving a temporary professional employee and discussion of two confidential special education matters involving students. By way of attendance, all board members are in attendance except for Ms. Graff, who is excused, and Mr. McGinnis, who is also excused. And next, we have guests and scheduled speakers. Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, it is my pleasure to introduce Skyview Upper Elementary School Principal, Ms. Nicole Barical, to introduce the Award of Excellence winners for November 2022. Nicole?
Great, thank you. And it is a pleasure to be here tonight to introduce these very hardworking Skyview employees. And I also just want to give a very special thank you to both Tagen and Natalia for your great work this evening. First, we have Mrs. Sharon Olmer, an instructional assistant. Sharon enters Skyview each day with an upbeat presence that puts a smile on the faces of those around her. She offers positive reinforcement to our students and maintains a positive collaborative relationship with all of her colleagues. The Skyview community is grateful for her humor, her positivity, and her ability to make strong connections with our students. Next, we have Ms. Stephanie Mikulcavich, an instructional assistant. Stephanie is also a hardworking individual who ensures students are set up for success and that all students' needs are met. She collaborates well with her colleagues and takes the initiative when given a task or an assignment while still maintaining a positive attitude. The Skyview community is grateful for Stephanie's work ethic, positive presence, and her strong ability to connect with our students. Thank you, Stephanie. Next, we have Mrs. Susan Michelson, an instructional assistant. Sue is well-known in the Skyview library for continuing to go above and beyond her assigned responsibilities. She has a positive presence and sets an example on how to treat others in all situations. The Skyview community is grateful for her teamwork with her colleagues, her willingness to help with any task, and her continuous positive presence. Thank you, Mrs. Michelson. Next, we have Ms. Kelsey Glass, a learning support teacher. Kelsey serves as a sincere student advocate. She takes time to build positive relationships, which allows her to understand the various needs of her students on a daily basis. The Skyview community is grateful for her strong work ethic, her ability to meet the needs of all of her students, and for her continuous dedication to any task within the building. Thank you, Ms. Glass. Next, we have Mrs. Angela Hiller, our school counselor. Angela continues to be appreciated by all of the staff members she works with, as she is always willing to drop whatever she is doing when a student need arises. She has taken the time to get to know all of the students she serves and has built positive relationships with them so that she can serve as their advocate. The Skyview community is grateful for her dedication to students, commitment to our school culture, and her positivity and sense of humor. Thank you, Mrs. Hiller. And next, we have Mr. Dave Bickle, our music teacher. Dave is the reason many of our students look forward to coming to school so much. He makes learning fun for students, and he is creative and engaging in his daily work. The Skyview community is grateful for his theatrical demeanor, his sense of humor, and his willingness to meet the needs of all of his students. Thank you, Mr. Bickle. Next, we have Mrs. Jennifer Zavertnik, our parent volunteer. Jen is a pleasure to work with and helps to bridge the communication between home and school. She considers the needs of all Skyview students to ensure that each one is included and able to participate in activities planned. She is mindful of the additional tasks and responsibilities that are being asked of all stakeholders at Skyview when organizing events. The Skyview community is grateful for Jen's positive presence, her dedication to staff and students, and her level of professionalism at all times. Thank you, Mrs. Zavertnik.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Barical. We really appreciate the fact that we're able to share so many wonderful employees of the Methacton School District. Again, we do this monthly to not only recognize our support, our professional, and starting this year, we started recognizing our volunteers. So with all that said, we have such an awesome school community, and I can't wait till next month. It's only a few short days away, and we'll be recognizing folks from Warsaw to Elementary School. So with that said, next on the guests and scheduled speakers is a MESA update. So I'm going to ask for the presentation to be put up on the screen. I'm going to take my post at the podium. Members of the board, you should have a copy of this presentation in paper form in front of you. Members of the public, the presentation will be posted here, and will be then posted on the district website for download. This evening, I present for your consideration at the December 5th, 2022 Board of School Directors meeting, the approval of the modification to the collective bargaining agreement with the Methacton Support Professional Association. Employees in this association generally hold secretarial, business office support, personal care assistant, and instructional assistant roles within the district. On Slide three, in a report from PSBA, that's the Pennsylvania School Boards Association, data indicates districts all across the Commonwealth, including Methacton, are experiencing a shortage of instructional aides and other support staff. These positions are key to supporting the delivery of our instructional program, along with ensuring effective and efficient operation of the district. On Slide four, this summer and well into the start of the school year, we had turnover of approximately 18 instructional aides and eight personal care assistants. And as you can see, we had a total transition of 34 positions within the MESA organization for these two type positions only. And with an addition of additional eight that the board approved this past budget cycle with the 22-23 school year, in all, we were faced with trying to attract qualified people to these positions at hourly rates sometimes lower than that of general service jobs. Today, we continue to have four IA positions vacant and 10 PCA positions open. On Slide five, the market indicates the need for us to take action to best position the district for the future. The access to employees, similar to my conversation with you just a month ago with respects to getting access to teachers, the marketplace has changed. And notably, in our strategic plan, under Strategy 7H, we recognize that we need to improve our competitive attractiveness. So our goal, as part of this presentation, is to adjust the starting hourly rates to attract and retain staff and to remove the new higher rate titration schedule. And I'll show you what that means in just a few minutes. The summary of the proposed modifications are as follows. For your approval on December 5th, amend the collective bargaining agreement dated July 1, 2021, to June 30, 2025. It would include language modifications to address new hire rates starting below the acceptable standard. And generally, what that means is if a starting rate was, for example, $16 an hour, the titration schedule would suggest that in the first year of employment, the employee hired for a starting rate of $16 an hour would actually receive 85% of 16. And then in year two, would receive 90% of the $16. And in year three, would receive 95% of the $16 hourly rate. And then by the fourth year, get up to the actual rate. Again, this agreement and the use of the titration schedule may have been appropriate during the time it was negotiated. However, today, I can tell you that this titration schedule has limited our ability to attract in a timely fashion, or in many cases at all, to fill the positions that we need and that we had allocated for use within the school district. The next item within this proposed summary is it includes an increase in the 2022-23 school year of 50 cents, starting January 16th of 2023. It also includes hourly rate chart modifications increases beginning July 1 of 2023, which includes the average rate increases as listed on this slide. Year one, a 1.22% increase. Year two, a 12.62% increase. And year three, a 2.51% increase. Again, the second year is the year by which all employees would be put onto the new hourly rate schedule. There are no change to employee healthcare premium contributions. They are as stated on this slide. On the next slide, Slide seven, these are the proposed rate. This is the proposed rate scale. This rate scale shows the current rate as the collective bargaining agreement so exists. It talks about the proposed and the percent change over the three years of the recommended change. It also includes the addition of the position called A8. And I believe, Mr. Regina, when we get to the slide for the language changes, we'll talk a little bit about what that position includes or entails. In my presentation, we also have a list of rate comparisons. Now, on Slide eight, this attempts to demonstrate the comparisons to positions in the county as well as in neighboring districts. But please know that this is not exact, because there are slight differences in the titles among different districts, and in some cases, the types of responsibilities that employees would have. But based on the information that we had available to us, we show that, for your approval, this recommendation will help support our support professional employees to not only keep our staff, but also to better position us for attracting staff members in the future. On Slide nine, and this is a slide that I had shared with you back when we talked about the Methacton Education Association's modification of their contract. And this decision, as a decision of personnel, which, as we recognize, takes about 70% of our budget, so all things, you know, associated with personnel constitute about 70% of our regular operating annual budget. And as such, we need to take into consideration the ability to raise the revenue in order to pay for the expenses by which we have available to us. So with that said, the Act One index must be considered when determining this decision. But it is important that the index is recognized that Methacton, as a school district, has done a tremendous job over the years in keeping the tax increase, on average, well below that of the Act One index, as this chart so indicates. We also know that in the 23-24 school or operating year, there will be a maximum of a 4.1% Act One index, which is the largest in recent history. Certainly, having to produce an increase of this type for the support professionals, along with that, which has already been done for the teachers' association. If you recall, we had talked about anywhere from 2.7% to 3% for just the teacher's contract. We are talking in terms of maybe another number, a little bit higher than that, when you consider both of these contracts together, and that is on a separate slide coming up. But the important part of this is that the Act One index takes into consideration the maximum amount that the district can raise taxes to pay for the expenses. And the second part of this is that its index is calculated by the average percentage increases in the Pennsylvania statewide average weekly wage and the federal employee cost index. So the Act One index really tells us that the cost of providing public education and/or providing services and the cost of goods and services within our given community have risen to these levels, and Methacton School District has been able to manage their budget, and including well into the future, by keeping our average tax rates lower by managing the district well. So with that said, we're on to Slide 10 with the language modifications. Mr. Regina?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. So we have two specific items for language modifications in the collective bargaining agreement for your recommendation this evening. The first one is the removal of the language found in Addendum 2, Item 2, which is specific to the titration that Dr. Zerbi referred to earlier, essentially saying any employee hired after July 1, 2021 would experience a percent decrease of the normal rate listed in the collective bargaining agreement. For instance, an A1 position that's listed at $16.20 an hour in the agreement would actually start here at the district at $13.77 an hour. So we'll be removing that language, so everyone will be coming in on the rate that's listed in the collective bargaining agreement. The second language that is going to be added is the A8 position, the monitoring assistant, which will be specific for assisting a number of different areas, specifically in the upper grade levels, looking at monitoring different areas, whether it is covering duties, lunchroom, CSR, could be for study halls, could be lunchroom, could be a number of different areas that are specific to the instructional environment. We have, there's a couple of places in the contract that we do have to look at, though, for additions. So for Article 15 for in-service days, we have to add the A8. We have to look at employment classifications, also in Addendum 1, and the annual contracted days. So there are some things that we will work on. It's going to be a number of student days, but just some things that we have to add in the agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Regina. On the next slide, it talks about year one of the modification. We know that there'll be no tax increase, because the rate has already been established for this school year. This is the year where we would add 50 cents onto each hourly rate. We would use the funds that were budgeted in terms of, as listed there, the 22-23 budget surplus, and that really refers to the fact that we've had a number of positions, not only from the support realm, but also from the professional realm, that we've been unable to fill in a timely fashion. So as an example, some teachers were budgeted to start on this first day of school. Well, for example, we haven't been able to fill some of those positions. Now, while we're in a better position today, at the beginning of September, we were still searching for staff, and same with aides. And like I told you earlier, we still have four IA positions and 10 PCA positions that are not filled. So with that said, we would use what's called those funds to help offset the costs associated with the increase of 50 cents per employee. That's estimated to be an increase of about $67,630. And that constitutes the pay increase, on average, of about 1.22%. On the next slide, which is Slide 12, we go into year two. And this year two is the forecasted 23-24 tax increase. This would be based on a budget that you would be approving in June. And it is estimated at this moment in time, given the actions that we already have taken with the MBEA contract modification, and if you were to accept this one, we would likely be in the neighborhood of about a 3% to a 3.1% tax increase. Now, again, this is an estimation. This is not an exact science. It's certainly not going to take us to 4.1%, but it could be lower. It could be somewhere in this neighborhood. But I think it's important for the board to understand that, similar to that of the teachers' agreement, a modification and an acceptance of this agreement has an impact in future year budgets. And that's estimated to be an increase of about $712,464, or the 12.62% pay increase. On the next slide, Slide 13, you'll see year three of the modified agreement. It is forecasted that the district will need to have about a 1.7% to a 2.3% tax increase to cover the MEA and MESA modification. to cover the MEA and MESA modifications with a total of $159,556.33 estimated. And the last slide is the timeline slide. On November 21st, the association voted to accept the amendment. I'm presenting this evening for the recommendation. On December 5th, is my recommendation, the board takes action on the amendment. On January 16th of 2023, the pay rates of the extra 50 cents per hour goes into effect, and the first pay with the new pay rates will be issued on February 15th of 2023. Questions from members of the board? Again, this is not an action for this evening. This is an action with a recommendation for December 5th. But with that said, are there any questions from members of the board at this time? Madam President?
Just more a point of clarification for anyone who might be viewing the presentation. On Slide 7, the current versus the proposed. So our current, these are our current rates as they are now for the different classes, but in reality, many are getting paid less than this. And that is, that has been the crux of our issue in recruiting and attracting the employees. Just, I just want to, you know, just clarify that chart.
Exactly. Let me just rephrase that again. So that's a great point. So in respects to what you're saying, while it says current of $16.20, 34 new hires, okay, that's why I used the number earlier, 34 new hires would be subjected to the 85% of that if we were hiring for an A1 position. Now, A1 is a recess aid, and we didn't hire 34 of those, but we definitely have a recess aid in every one of our elementary schools. And then we have a number of the other positions that are listed here. But as Mr. Regina mentioned, you know, that would be trying to attract somebody to watch over children, to supervise them for safe play, for $13 and some odd change an hour. So our recommendation is certainly modifying the rates as presented on this slide and in this chart, but also removing the titration schedule so that everyone knows, including the employees, that when I start, I'm going to be starting at this rate. And it's a rate, in our opinion, that is commensurate with the marketplace and certainly with work that's done by similar schools, not only in the county, but in the neighboring districts, and is also a more attractive and more competitive rate for service industry jobs that are likely in this pay range previously.
And maybe we could just add a note to that slide for the public, you know, when we post it for the public viewing, just to see that $13 on paper in our presentation so that people know that we are really below market rate with a lot of our, what we're trying to attract.
That's a great suggestion. I will do that before posting it tomorrow morning. Other questions from members of the board? Mr. Winters?
Yeah, one is a comment. I just wanted, I know somebody's going to say, well, why did you negotiate that 85%? And that was only in the most, I wasn't part of the MESA negotiation at all, but my understanding is that was something that MESA union leadership requested to have some type of differentiated rate between incoming employees and people that had been there already. So this was their proposal in some way.
That is my understanding as well.
Yeah. Also, then, Dave, on Slide 8, I think maybe just the headers are, just so you could explain a little bit, the rate comparisons. It says the county average and the neighboring average, but it looks like it's the differential on the rates and the column, the...
That is, yeah, we'll make those modifications.
Okay. So what do, do you know, when we see 387, for example, does that mean our rate is going to be $3.87 better or worse than the county average? Do you remember?
We're going to be $3.87 better.
Okay. Than the county average?
If there's no other questions, thank you, and that ends the guest and...
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Perdue?
I'm still a little bit unclear about the A8. I know Mr. Regina explained it a little bit, but I'm trying to understand, just because it states that the position would be posted. Can you explain that role again?
Certainly. The fact that it's going to be posted, Ms. Perdue, or the actual assignment?
I guess a little bit of the assignment. I'm just trying to figure out what, how that's differentiated. And I see the know here, but I just don't have a clear understanding of it.
Sure. The idea is that the upper grade levels, a lot of our staff members are utilized for different duties, our professional staff members, and we recognize they may need to be utilized for coverages or may have different responsibility in IEP meetings, and to have monitoring assistants available to be able to assist in those matters so we could utilize for our coverage, and even have more individuals around for, let's say, a lunch duty, where we may be utilizing instructional assistants at our COLA, or our office assistants at Skyview, or whoever is available at lunch duty for the high school. So the idea is that we would have these monitoring assistants available to be doing those matters, but not to be used necessarily in the instructional setting where a PCA or an IA would normally be used. These positions would be posted like any other positions internally first, and then be posted for the outside after.
Do we have an idea of how many?
We have eight total that we'd be looking for. I believe two of them have already been filled, so we'd be looking for six at this moment in time.
Thank you. And I just have a quick question in reference to the contract. Will we also be amending the date?
There is no modification recommended to the terms of the agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from members of the board? Thank you so much, and we'll move on with the rest of the agenda.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Now, we're moving on to reports. All the committee reports are attached, and we are going to begin with Ms. Washington with the DEI report, please.
And good evening. Since my last report last month, 65 staff members across the district have participated in the district's focus on school climate with two-day-long training sessions with Tom Stucker and associates. And during those two-day-long content sessions, we not only received information about current research and best practices, but were also able to participate in interactive activities that simulate and reinforce just the importance of these topics that I'll mention in a bit. We also have been able to collaboratively identify our school building successes, achievements, and areas of growth. And with this new information, each building team has started to set goals and develop action plans to support a positive school climate and foster a sense of belonging for all members of the Methacton community. And our next scheduled session will be held December 1st. So our first session was a day focused on social-emotional learning and systems leadership, and our second content session focused on mental health and trauma-informed practices to provide common language and understanding needed to support our students, families, and staff. And this work will continue throughout the academic year. Also, in this season of gratitude, I am thankful for this initiative led by Dr. Engstat and People Services, and that's supported by our district leadership. And in addition to weekly meetings with Dr. Engstat and Che Regina, I had the opportunity more recently to begin discussions with the members of the Office of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and I am looking forward to continued collaboration with this office. I'm also thankful for our building principals and school leaders for all the work that they have done and will continue to do. I'm continuing to get to know the unique qualities of each of our schools and enjoy the many events that they promote to incorporate a sense of belonging and positive school climate. These are a variety of activities within our schools that occur both during and outside of school hours, and include teachers greeting their classes at the door. They are routine practices, such as these activities that support the district's focus on providing an exceptional Methacton school district experience for all.
Thank you. Next, we have, is there an intermediate unit report, Ms. Reese?
I'll be brief tonight. We met virtually on 11/16 because the IU hosted a school safety conference that day, all day long with more than 350 attendees, so we met virtually in normal board business. And I just wanted to advertise for next year. I had mentioned the MCIU Foundation Casino Night that occurred in November, and I honestly, I went, I thought I was going to go for an hour just to show my support. It was probably the most fun charity event I've ever been to. So if any of you want to go next November, I would, we should go together because it helps support sending some students from Montgomery County to camp that would not, usually not be able to go, and it was really an awesome event. So I wanted to thank the Education Foundation, and anyone is willing, anyone is able to go. And I'll let you do the tech center.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Reese. I will give the report for the North Monco Technical Career Center. We met yesterday on 11/21. We recognized Michael Broke, a 10th grader at North Penn in the automotive program, who discussed his passion for cars and the creativity that comes with customization. He's already working in his field, and he enjoys working together with class and staff, and he will be getting his OSHA certification, among other certifications, by his senior year. So he's really doing great things at North Monco Tech. Also, there was a skills leadership conference held at Kalahari Resorts earlier this month. Forty students from North Monco Tech attended, and apparently was highly successful, and all the students were, had a great time and really got a lot out of the program. The board voted to sunset the drafting program last night. With only a few enrolled, the program will now age out existing 11th graders and find alternate programs for the few remaining students. This enables the tech career center to use that space for more popular programs and help with our problem of students being on the waitlist for the more popular programs. The board is invited to the December 19th holiday dinner at the Career Center, and I hope to see everyone there. And just a final note, the restaurant and salon are open, and you can check their website at nmtcc.org. Go to Open to the Public for hours and their weekly menus. Do you have anything? All right, thank you. All right. And next, we have Student Board Representatives Report. We have Leah Zhang and Joey Shaw tonight.
Good evening, everyone. To begin, the first bargaining period of the 2022-2023 school year officially concluded on November 11th. Additionally, entertainment at MHS has been on the rise with the Methacton Theater Company performing The Great Gatsby from November 10th through the 12th. Dance auditions for Footloose the Musical happened on the 16th of November as well. At the end of last month, Helping Paw has also hosted its annual Halloween Fest, where people were able to bring their dogs dressed in costumes. Proceeds from the event went to the organization, Caring Partners for Life. On another note, Dr. James Do, a professor at Stevens Institute of Technology and expert on cybersecurity, visited MHS on November 16th. In his presentation, he spoke about computer science topics that are relevant to daily life. Regarding sports of Methacton, the boys and girls cross-country teams raced and packed championships on October 28th. The boys' cross-country team also competed at districts, where Evander Lackman qualified for states, and Charlie Reith, Quinn Comfort, and Thomas Howardson ran personal records. Congratulations to these athletes. Girls' field hockey also won 1-0 against CB West High School, to which they will go on to compete at states. As far as future events go, the National Student Leadership Conference, which focuses on life on college campuses, tours, simulations, and leadership training, is nominating students who are interested. These nominations are due December 1st. Thank you.
Two members of the girls' Methacton tennis team in grades 11 and 12, Hannah Nuey and Alice Leung, won the state championship for the second time in a row on November 4th. The Harlem Wizards basketball game was held by Minithon on Monday, November 7th, in which the faculty, boys' basketball varsity team, and the Harlem Wizards participated to raise money for children with cancer. 387 tickets were sold in total. The National Honor Society held its first organized volunteer opportunity of the year at the mitzvah circle on Sunday, October 30th, where students packaged and stored clothings for family. The Medicine and Science Club has started planning for STEM Day, which will include experiments for elementary students to participate in. The Kids Against Crisis Club went to Woodland in Eagleville to do arts and crafts and play interactive games with the students there. On Saturday, November 12th, Academic Decathlon participated in a scrimmage at Satterton High School, and the Youth Action Club did a food drive on the 17th of November. The Black Student Union has put up a calendar to honor Black veterans in history. Thank you.
Great report. Thank you so much. Next, we'll hear from the Methacton Education Foundation, Ms. Pepper.
Good evening. I just have two things, three things to report tonight. First, the Methacton Education Foundation is proud to announce that we will be supporting the renovations to the Malin Planetarium in the number of $53,000 and hoping to continue that. The second thing is that we have moved into the second round of our grant approvals for the fall term, and recipients will be notified mid-December. So we're looking forward to making some good announcements shortly. And then finally, dodgeball registration will be opening up January 2nd for our event that will be held on March 26th. So please start putting together your teams. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now, we have communications.
Thank you, and good evening. Over the past month, the entire Delaware Valley has gotten a small glimpse into some of the wonderful things happening here in the Methacton School District. Earlier this month, Channels 3, 6, 10, and 29 all covered a fun story at Skyview Upper Elementary School as students and staff worked together to spell out "Go Phillies" during the team's World Series run. Over at Methacton High School, officials with the Pennsylvania Department of Education and the Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture were wowed when they toured the Wendy Hill Hydroponic Farm on November 7th. Last Thursday, Fox 29's Bob Kelly featured Eagleville Elementary's Read-a-Thon on his Kelly's Classroom Show. And we learned yesterday that Eagleville's 4th-grade chorus earned a semifinalist spot on B101's Christmas Choir Competition in the K-8 grade division with their song "Should Have Been a North Pole Elf." You can vote to help them advance to the finals starting next week. All the details, as well as information about the other stories I shared with you this evening, can be found on the Methacton website under Points of Pride. Last, but certainly not least, I wish you all and our entire Methacton community a very happy and healthy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Same to you. Now, we have Superintendent's Report. Dr. Zerbi?
Thank you, Madam President. As you can see under advisements, there was one advisement for your acknowledgement, but I have two other matters that I want to share with you this evening. The first one being with respects to the Horizon Project, and the second one being with respects to the Audubon Elementary School. So in March of 2022, the district's planetarium director presented to the board the need for upgrades and replacements of equipment in the Arkola Planetarium. That work summarized in a presentation to the property committee of the board in November, and then again before the full board at last week's work session. Will then compass a replacement of the dome, HVAC, seating, signage, audio lighting systems, and technology and projector systems. It is estimated to cost the district approximately $241,000 to complete this total renovation, which is estimated, it's only going to cost the district $241,000 to complete this projected project, estimated to cost in total $1.143 million. The existing dome is the original dome. Dome has already been painted once and is visibly... Dome has already been painted once and is visibly deteriorating in several spots, leaving expanded seams and gaps. The HVAC system is a standalone unit located inside the building, has been failing intermittently over the past three years. It has reached its end of life and will be replaced by a rooftop unit that will be easier to maintain, provide dependable service, and increase the energy efficiency. The technology projection system has reached its end of life and is no longer supported with parts. Furthermore, a replacement of such a system either today or even down the road is nearly equivalent to the total cost that the district would incur and that is putting forward under this proposal. And it comes with a plethora of resources and curriculum materials that will support instruction for all students. The lighting, sound, and signage are significant enhancements that will provide an immersive experience like no other. The seating will be, will provide more flexible options for the students and teachers and will increase the room's accessibility. The benefit of approving the renovation of the Arcola Planetarium now will allow the Math Acton School District to utilize grant funds to cover nearly 80% of the cost of replacement of the planetarium as a space and as a curricular resources. That has proven to be a competitive, attractive feature for the Math Acton School District. And I recommend that we elevate this experience for our students and our community for years to come. The next matter that I'd like to share with you is just a brief comments on the Audubon Elementary School decision that is on the agenda for your consideration this evening under 13G. As you, as you may have noticed, I produced two documents that are attached to that recommendation. And in summary, I'd like to share a little bit about the one document. It talks about the summary of this entire decision-making process. And some of the major matters are as follows. Audubon Elementary School was closed as a school in 2017 with students being redistricted to the remaining four elementary schools. The district began using Audubon Elementary School for storage with an annual cost to maintain at approximately $200,000 a year. 2019, 2021, and 22, there were discussions held with Lower Providence Township on potential use of part or all of the property and or building for a potential community center. In April of 22, the strategic plan was adopted and Item 6B talked about the, us taking, having better targeted use of our properties, including Audubon, and becoming, making a better determination of its use and value and associated risk. On July of 22, we revisited the district township discussions with a no substantial commitment to proceed forward with the community center or use of the building or property. The appraisal of the Audubon building occurred on two occasions, with one being most recently completed in July of 2022 and shared with the board. This information, both from 2018 and 22, remained confidential until such time a final determination is made on the property. But of particular note, I think it's important that we recognize that the appraisals indicate that the property is of greater resale value without the building due to generally the demolition costs associated with ridding the building of that property. In August of 22, the, I presented a sell or keep opportunity for the district board to consider. And that presentation included seven options for the board's consideration. We provided, around the same time, we provided an enrollment forecast in August and September of 22, indicating that enrollment will remain flat for the next 10 years. I shared that the given information at this time, it is reasonable that a school on the Audubon property is not needed at any time in the near future. Other information suggests that all four elementary schools generally have the ability to add on additional four classrooms if needed. I presented potential impact of the sale of the property with the building and the current zoning could have if the, if a brick and mortar charter school were to purchase or lease the property. The impact to the district operation along with escalating costs could create potential scenario for far greater than a $1 million brick and mortar charter school expense that the district incurs now. Presented a motion on November, on November 15th to authorize the superintendent to take the necessary actions to level the Audubon Elementary School building and to direct the superintendent to bring forward a plan for future district educational use by July 31st of 2023. That included all the estimated costs for leveling the building. And it was discussed at that meeting on the 15th that those expenses would be taken out of the capital reserve fund. The ongoing maintenance, it was also discussed that once the building is down, it would cost about $30,000 a year if it was outsourced to a landscaping company for doing general maintenance and upkeep and grass, or grass mowing, et cetera. We also know that in November of 2022, that I shared concerns about the charter school challenge with the land being zoned for a school and the property or reasonably presents a risk that if sold directly or indirectly to another and then leased to a brick and mortar charter school, what action that could have and impact it could have on the local tax base. And lastly, in some summation, given the careful and deliberation, deliberate actions over many years by the district board of school directors, the numerous attempts to collaborate with, with Lower Providence Township on a community center project, the annual concern of the $200,000 expense to maintain the building property per year, the potential challenges associated with the sale or lease of, of the building property to a charter school. The most appropriate step forward would be to level the building and allow for me to present some educational options. What this will provide to the board is if, if in July of 2023, the board can that time implement an educational use as recommended, hold on or determine for a later date how to use that property, find a combined use for the school and community, or sell the property with less risk of charter school impact. With that said, that ends my report here for this evening.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Now, it is time for public comment on board action items. This is an opportunity for residents to comment on matters that are to be decided upon as outlined on the agenda. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. The board of school directors may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments on board action items.
Good evening, John Andrews. I would like to ask for an extra minute beyond the three minutes as there are two significant votes this evening. The first vote that I described is leveling of the Audubon School. I believe this, this is a premature time to do that. I think that we need to await the discussion leading up to the, the property decisions of next July. I think the public needs to be given a chance to tour to the building and possibly develop ideas for its use, perhaps as a, as a rental property for, for the next five or 10 years. I think that just discussing uses with the Lower Providence supervisors is not an adequate evaluation of use of the building, which probably is worth at least $5 million. And perhaps there are some new directors who haven't even been through it. So, if they're uninformed, why should they be voting this evening? It makes no sense to level it ahead of the, the further study. So, I say, vote it down this evening. Regarding the Horizon Project, I provided a detailed statement to directors and the administration over the weekend. I listened to Dr. Zerbi saying there might be some cracks in the dome or seams that have opened up, whatever. I looked at the dome very carefully at a public show last week. I could see nothing wrong with the dome. Yet, you have a proposal from Spitz for $382,000 to replace the dome. Makes, that makes no sense to me. At the least, it needs further study. Apparently, there was no, no consideration of repair. Bottom line, vote down the administration plan. Regarding the current projector system, it was installed in 2014 for a cost of $250,000. Now, Spitz proposes to take it away for a credit of $2,200. If it was a car, would you accept that trade-in value? The answer is no. Last week, I viewed the setup at a public show. The seats look brand-new. The seats are flexible so that people can lean back to get a full view of the dome.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Andrews.
And also, I looked into virtual reality goggles. There are 100 school districts in the state that are using them, and they are far superior to, to the planetarium.
Thank you for your comments tonight.
Excuse me. Brian Earnshaw, Lower Providence. Regarding the budgetary transfers, I think I heard, if I heard correctly at last week's meeting, those transfers are being done to cover unbudgeted expenses. So, if you could clarify that? And if that's the case, it just confirms my statement during the budget review that that's entirely essentially superintendent's slush fund. Personnel matters, there are supplemental contracts for a school-based DEI and climate liaison. Could you provide some explanation what that is neat, what those positions are, why they're needed, and how the amounts being paid were determined? Two matters on the agenda for tonight. I sent the board after last week's work session, a list of questions regarding Audubon and the planetarium. I've received no response to any of those questions, so I'll review some of them now and hopefully you can answer them. Regarding the planetarium, was the $750,000 grant only able to be used to retrofit a planetarium? Were there other possible uses for those funds, including possibly helping students recover from two years of COVID lockdowns? Helping them with either after-school programs, including transportation, or other means that might help improve the educational value they're receiving and to help our schools' rankings? Were there competitive bids received for this project? If not, why? Why can't this project be managed by internal resources versus KCBA? Have you considered why Math Acton is only one of the few schools in, school districts in this state or the Commonwealth that has a planetarium? Perhaps many, many districts have concluded it's not worth the cost. And I find it interesting that Dr. Zerbi says it's only going to cost the district $241,000. Only, keyword, only, 241,000. I think most people with most taxpayers agree that's a lot of money. It's not only. And the total cost of the project is in fact $1.143 million, not 243,000. Regarding Audubon, I'd like to understand why, Dr. Zerbi, you're worried about a charter school coming in? If Math Acton's providing a quality education, no parent would take their kid out of Math Acton. Why is that a concern? Why is the building being leveled now before a final disposition of the property? Have you considered what the cost will be for maintenance if the building was mothballed? I believe it would be half, less than half of that 200,000. Dr. Zerbi, you cited $30,000 for maintenance. Are there other costs? You still have to carry general liability insurance. Is the property going to be open to the public? If so, I would think you're going to have general liability insurance needs. And what does that cost? Regarding the appraisal, what is the appraised value? What's your, what's the base for conclusion that it's worth more without a building on it? Have you considered the net value or just making the assumption that somebody's not going to pay to tear down the building if taxpayers pay to tear down the building? Why did Lower Providence drop their proposal? Maybe because there's no viable economic situation or solution for that property. Perhaps the district should take the same approach. In conclusion, the planetarium project should not be voted on. You don't have enough information and I think it might be time to shut the planetarium down or we spend another million one in five to 10 years from now. And for Audubon, just sell the property. It's beyond time. Thanks.
Jim Mollick, Warsester, that makes it very easy for me. The right-to-know costs for you guys last month, $2,000. If you don't make an adjustment, you're going to have a $500,000 surplus just from right-to-know alone. In your presentation tonight, Dr. Zerbi, you mentioned our 4.1% index and how much the teachers' situation is going to raise it to 3% to 3.5%. 770 grand. But tonight, you're going to spend more money, going to spend 600 grand on knocking down Audubon, another 240 or a million one, if you're going to look at it, on the other planetarium. Well, did you factor in what the tax increase could be if you didn't do those projects? There's no tax increase because of it, because it offsets the 770. So, what you're doing tonight is causing the tax increase, and I'm going to make sure everybody knows that. As far as the planetarium goes, I've asked you why this totally unnecessary expenditure? The answer is because. Because. Because we say so. Because we gave you a presentation, go do your homework. That's what we get. I read the rest, presentations, and I can't find anything in there to justify as the project other than you saying it's going to be important for STEM learning. Where's the data on that? You have data on how a planetarium improves education? Present it to us. I'd love to see it, but I don't think it exists. So, I think you have a problem there. No engineering reports on the dome, no inspection reports. I asked you for them, Dave, you didn't give them to me. You didn't inspect it. The planetarium guy didn't inspect it. Spitz didn't inspect it. KCBA didn't inspect it. The dome's fine. Show me the report that says the dome is structurally unsound. It's fine, and you're going to go waste money putting a new dome up. Audubon, again, why knock it down? Because. Because we say so. Because you should go do your homework and go check out a prior presentation. I heard you talking tonight, Dave. What you're telling us does not comport with the facts of the presentations, because I've got them up here, okay? There's no presentation that analyzes leasing the building out. Pros, cons, costs, benefit, none. Talk to a real estate guy, 25 bucks a square foot, 55,000 square feet, potential revenue to you guys, $1.5 million. That takes care of your freaking 3.5% tax increase pretty darn quick. Nothing. I did a right-to-know request for all your meetings with Lower Providence. Guess what? You say it don't exist. What you're doing tonight is wrong. It's unnecessary and it's going to come back to haunt you. Now, what's our, what's our recourse? Something called an injunction. Yeah. An injunction. Only thing you guys may understand. Thanks.
Okay. Any other comments on board action items tonight?
Good evening, Glenn Armstrong, Audubon. I don't know if you volunteer to be on the board. If you do, thank you. Just a little concerned, there was a invitation to bid for kitchen equipment from Math Acton School District, which had to do with a Type 1000 dishwasher, two steamers, three other dishwashers, and another dishwasher on top of that. I did call asking for some clarification on when the bid was going to be opened, as it was presented to be opened on Thursday, November 4th. Conflict, Thursday was November 3rd, Friday was November 4th. No clarification was given. It's my understanding there were two bidders on the project, one from West Virginia, one from out Western Pennsylvania. Specifications were really unclear on the invitation to bid. There are alternate equals that could be provided, much more energy efficient, which would then fall in line would then fall in line with the strategic plan, Strategy 6E. I don't think that there was enough homework nor opportunity nor advertisement given on this solicitation or bid, and I think that in the interest of the owner, that all bids should be rejected, and it should be resubmitted or reapplied for an invitation to bid. The cost of those dishwashers is probably in excess of 300, $400,000 right there, and I wonder how many service calls had to be placed on those dishwashers and why they're seeing to need to be replaced. And just being financially responsible with our money, begging back to the question of the dome, I think I was there once, maybe 10, 12, 15 years ago, it was really cool. VR goggles, I don't know, newer technology that can be updated at less cost. You guys have a lot going on, and I appreciate your, your work and what you're doing as far as trying to balance the budget. As a taxpayer, I don't want to see another 3%, another 5% added on. I think that the budget can be balanced. There's a lot that needs to be considered, and I do appreciate your efforts to take everything into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on board action items tonight? All right, seeing none. Let's approve the board meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve the board meeting minutes from September, October, and the special meeting in November as attached? Ms. Cancro, may I have a second? Ms. Perdue, any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, 7-0. Thank you. Now fiscal items. Mr. Booker.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight for your approval are six financial matters, none of which have changed from the work session.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve all fiscal items as presented, unless someone wants to take something out separately? May I have a motion? Ms. Cancro? Second? Mr. Ruckstuhl? Discussion? Mr. Winters?
Yeah, I think we discussed the budgetary transfer, but Mr. Booker, can you explain that what we put in the budget and what these two budgetary transfers, I think it's, I forgot, 40,000 and then 100,000 maybe? I don't remember exactly. But how that process works and what these unforeseen expenses were?
So we have a budgetary reserve of $200,000, and that is to cover unforeseen expenditures that come up. The budget transfers that we have in today, I don't have them off the top of my head, unfortunately. They're ones that we did not budget for and needed to account for them without impacting the budgets that they're currently being spent under.
And my understanding, Mr. Booker, is that some districts use the budgetary transfers, a budget, I'm sorry, budgetary reserve, and some do not, but often the reason given by those that do is related to sometimes special education costs associated with that, the unknown of students moving in and out, but it can be used for any purpose that we decide to do related to moving. For, I believe these, these two that we've used it for are pretty relevant for the delivery of the educational model. So I just, if you could confirm that, that as how other districts have used budgetary reserves?
Most districts do have a budgetary reserve for unforeseen items. Anecdotal, they can go from 200,000 to 8 million. It really depends on the school district and how the school district sets up their budget and how they account for things.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Reese?
Although this isn't on the agenda for this evening, since you're here, Mr. Booker, in the comment that Mr. Armstrong, I believe his name was, about the bid, that has not been brought to our attention yet. Am I correct?
No, the, the bid was honored through Friday, the 4th. The funds that are spending on it are out of the food service budget. It's not a taxable income, it's not the general fund, so it would have no impact on the taxpayers. The funds are generated in that account or through the sales of meals, and we are required to keep that at a certain threshold or blower. We're now above that threshold, so we're spending down based on the needs that facilities has told us as what items, again, I can tell you we're not getting all of them, so we put out the bid to see what we can get for bids and what we can afford then. So we would not be buying all those items.
And that has not been brought to our attention yet, correct?
No, we're still working through the bids.
And will that be brought through property, or is that something that goes through finance or?
We would probably bring it through finance to approve the bids and then the board.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on fiscal? All right, seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, 7-0. Thank you. All right, now on to personnel. Dr. Sergini.
Thank you, Madam President, and good evening. For your consideration this month, we have the personnel items as presented at the work session, as well as the following additions. One employment classified, Colleen Dersfler, paraprofessional 2 at Eagleville. We welcome Colleen to Eagleville and look forward to the good work that she'll do with students. One change of status classified, Adriana Rundle from part-time office assistant at Arrowhead, pardon me, to paraprofessional 2 at Arrowhead. We look forward to the good work that she will do in this position. And then several additions or changes to the list of supplemental contracts, including additional IEP writing hours, additional activity sponsors, GIEP writing, and the school-based DEI and climate liaisons. Thank you.
All right, thank you. May I have a motion to approve all personnel items as presented, unless someone wants to take them separately? Ms. Cancro? Second? Ms. Reese? Questions, comments from the board?
I had one question last week. Was any luck on a 7th grade basketball coach?
Yes, there is. I met with Mr. Smink today, and that person will be in place next week.
Okay, thank you. And although we have discussed the DEI liaisons at, at education and their role, I don't want to misspeak. Are you able to briefly explain what that is? And before you get started, I did want to say thank you to everybody who's taking the supplemental contracts, whether it be the tutors, or the writers, or the DEI liaisons. I'm, I'm excited for that role to start, but if you could just describe it briefly for the member of the public who was curious?
Absolutely. Those individuals will be working directly with the members of the faculty and staff in those school buildings on matters of DEI and climate, and will be collaborating directly with Alexis Washington to address those matters at a district level.
Okay, other, are you finished? Ms. Perdue? Yes?
Can you just clarify how many for the DEI and climate liaisons?
There are seven, one in each building.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any other comments? All right, seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, all right, 7-0. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, curriculum and programs. Dr. Walsh?
Thank you, Madam President. Approve the following revised curriculum for the 2223 school year as listed below. There have been no changes since our last meeting.
All right, thank you. May I have a motion to approve all the curriculum and programs items as presented? Ms. Reese, may I have a second? Ms. Perdue? Questions, comments from the board? All right, seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, 7-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, now we have policy. Ms. Sergina?
Thank you, Ms. Drummond. Each of the items under policy is first read. They will be before the board and second read in our December voting meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have other. Dr. Zerby?
Thank you, Madam President. On the, under number 13A, we have gifts and donations. Approve the generous gift of David Donovan, Catus Margolis, for the Hydoponic Farm purchase of solar panels at $500. The trips listed here, they would be for the high school, Methacton High School trip to Bodine on November 29th, 2022, the high school trip to Wildoun, New Jersey for the girls' basketball team tournament, December 27th through 28th, the high school trip from Ocean Breeze Sports Complex for the girls' indoor track and field on December 17th. To approve the, I guess the same location for the, the boys' indoor track and field on December 18th, and then on the fifth trip would be to Conestoga Valley for the wrestling tournament on December 29th of 2022. And then on 13C, we have the Horizon Project. 13D, we have the community education activities. 13E with transportation. And the last item, I'm sorry, then, then, then we have the athletic and activity proposal, and that is the establishment of the bocce at the high school. And please know that this has been modified based on the recommendation of Mr. McGinnis. We had Athletic Director, Mr. Smink, provide an update to this, and the update, updated presentation is attached. It's approximately an additional $2,000 more than what was presented last week, for a total of $8,700. And that will get, you know, the, the recommended outfitting of, of the student athletes and the coaches. And then the last item on the agenda is the Audubon Elementary School recommendation.
All right, thank you. May I have a motion to approve all the items listed under other as presented? Unless someone wants to take them?
Can we take the Audubon separately?
Take Audubon separately, sure.
I think we should take the Horizon separately, just for the sake of the importance.
And, and the Horizon Project also? Okay. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve then the items listed 13A, B, D, E, and F as presented? Ms. Reese? And a second? Mr. Ruckstuhl? Any discussion or comments on those items?
Just real quick, I know we discussed it last week in detail, but it's just, I'm so happy that we're adding bocce, and it is so nice to see so many activities under 13. It's, it's, you know, with the, with the plays last week and all the events going on, it is really nice to see this. So I'm excited for our students and our student athletes.
Thank you. Any other comments on these? Mr. Winters?
Only for the sake of transparency, to let you know that on 13B1, I've been asked to attend with the staff member. So I will be attending that field trip to Bodine High School in Philadelphia.
Any other comments on those? All right, on those, all in favor? All right, any opposed? All right, 7-0. All right, let's look at 13C, the Horizon Project. Can I get a motion to approve item 13C as presented? Ms. Reese? And a second? Mr. Winters? All right, discussion on that? Ms. Cancro?
No, I, I just wanted to say, I do appreciate the recommendations that the public has given us tonight about the VR and, and all the other suggestions. I do think this planetarium is something that is exceptional here, and yes, it's one of few that's here in Pennsylvania, but that is amazing, and that's something that you, we bring children to a public school in a space where they can look and learn together and see each other's experiences and look at each other's faces and see the teacher's excitement, the kids' excitement. It's an experience for them, and I think it utilizes not only all the grade levels, K through 12, but we go outside our community, and everyone in our community is able to utilize it. It is truly a cherish, an educational higher level that I'm proud to deliver. So with that, I, I am absolutely excited for this to, to move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Cancro. Any other comments? Mr. Winters?
Yeah, there were some other questions, the question about the $750,000 ESAR funds. Yes, it could be used for other things. It's not that it can only be used for, for the planetarium. Where other funding uses also considered evaluated, and then the point that was made about the, what the administration could do with those funds for direct benefit of students covering the two years of, of COVID. These instructional aids that we're having troubles filling those positions for, were put in place for educational recovery specifically in different areas in the, our hole and specifically at high school. And the idea was to free up the staff members to be able to provide more of the support and have them having less of study halls and things like that. So those items we have done, and those are, were, we committed to for probably a two or three time period, if I'm correct, Dr. Zerby. So I don't know if you want to jump in on specifically how we're using those funds to support education.
Yeah, absolutely, Mr. Winters. So, I mean, we've done a number of things between, besides providing professional development for our staff, we use the funds to provide resources such as, as textbooks, computer programs for, for mediation. We've also instituted the Boost Program, which the, the board has approved. We, we've run that now for, on two occasions. We're actually running that as we speak, as a virtual option for, for students. So there's a number of things that we're doing, and we actually have a few more items that we'll be bringing forward to the board in January with, with the consideration by the Education Committee. But with that said, we've done a number of other things to not only help position students, but also position staff to best prepare students as they transition out of the, the COVID period. For example, your approval of the three math coaches just this past school year is, is indicative of the commitment that we have to making sure that we are supporting our teachers to help support the students. And you're likely to see some more similar recommendations coming out of our January discussions. But it, it also should be, be recognized, and it was presented in this way exactly when I, when I mentioned the opportunity for us to, to address the Horizon Project with the use of the SS3 funds. If you recall, the original plan was to use approximately $1.3 million of that SS3 funds to offset the costs associated with the renovation of the HVAC at the high school. Once we recognized, as you did as well, that, that HVAC project was not going to materialize in a timely fashion, it was quickly, you know, determined that the best use of the funds in the, in the, in the manner and time that we had available to us was to allocate them and with prior approval from PDE for the use in the Horizon Project. So this evening, what you're really approving is a secondary use of, of our original consideration, which in my belief, and likely yours as well, is, is a, is a much needed renovation that will support our students and our community for years to come.
Thank you. I think that, that there's a point there also related to these funds that became available, that they, that we are trying to be very conscious about the sustainability to provide those services when those funds dry up, right? So I believe there's many, many districts that have used these funds, unfortunately, for operational expenses that are going to, at some point, unless they're repeated in some way, going to face, I know that's not our problem, but the point is we're evaluating how to use these funds in the most effective way that is sustainable for years to come and not add some teachers that we have to pull away two years later.
Yeah, exactly. And just to add to that, you know, I think there, there was one comment suggesting that the reason we're going to need to do a tax increase is because of these, these, these projects. Well, the fact is that the $241,000 and the 500-some thousand dollars for the Audubon thing will actually come out of the capital reserve, which is something we already have, which is not associated with a tax increase at all. So these are one-time funds, and the utilization of, for example, the SS3 funds for the renovation of the high school, or to put up the, the dome on the planetarium or do the projector, is an appropriate and an important utilization of those funds whereby it, it doesn't impact the budget, it doesn't impact the, the taxing required within the district. So it is, it is the best and most prudent decision. So it is, it is the best and most prudent decision.
And another clarification question on the planetarium. KCBA is providing the extra architectural services associated. Who would be managing the project? Would that be Fedavia?
Yeah, well, in this, in this project, like in all projects, our owner's rep has been Fedavia, and unless the board directs us otherwise, that would be, you know, that would be their ongoing agreement that we have with them.
All right, any other comments on 13C, the Horizon Project? Okay. All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, that passes 7-0. Thank you. All right, now we're on to 13G, which is the disposition of Audubon Elementary School. May I have a motion on 13G as presented? Mr. Winters? A second? Ms. Kangaro? Questions, comments from the board? Mr. Winters?
Okay. I did express some of my opinion last week, and I know that there were some questions that came in about how I use certain words about will of the board. I just want to clarify what I meant by will of the board, in case there's any confusion. I believe the board has expressed the preference for an educational purpose for this property. That is what I called will. It is not meant that there was some other aspect of will communicated at any other point other than the finance and property and working sessions and voting sessions. I think hopefully that clarifies that. I did briefly look at where, as Dr. Zerby has summarized well today, but just some of the discussions that we have go back as early as, I'm sure it happened earlier, but June 26, 2019, there were discussions about Audubon. We've been questioning as a board where we were going with this for, most recently in the last year, trying to get this moving along. There's been numerous conversations, there's been customers, I'm sorry, parents and committee members that have requested us to make a decision about Audubon have pointed out how long it has taken us to make a decision about Audubon. So I do believe in true in my heart that we have gone through a lot of the options that are available for us. Dr. Zerby has pointed out, we've gone back to him and say, some of those things aren't necessarily something we can support. And he has come, and while we're postponing the decision about what to do with the physical land property, certainly understanding what the appraisals are telling us, the only thing I can say is the appraisal does tell us the difference between when there's something on the property, meaning a building, the existing building, and the value of that with, with the building and without the building. Certainly, we are not going to share anything related to the appraisals, and I'm sure the committee member, a committee member truly understands that. There's some questions about the cost associated with Audubon. We were faced several years ago with a decision related to Arrowhead and Audubon about which one possibly to use and the expenses associated with fixing both of them. Both of them were above the $10 million mark conservatively. As for the questions related to charter school and this competition, it's, it's an element of financial aspect as well. I would argue that most charter schools do not provide an equal level of education. Certainly, that's a parent's choice, but the level of funding that goes to the charter schools that follow is a element that does not support public education in a way that equitably moves the money, in my humble opinion. So the potential of that property being sold and then resold, or that property being sold directly, or three, three owners later becoming a charter school is physically, probably, in my opinion, not smart for taxpayers and the fact. Say, conservatively, there's 50 students that decide to go to brick, brick and charter school. I believe it's $20,000 per charter student today, so there's a million dollars. I, knowing what the physical shape of that building is, the responsibilities for us to lease it, all those elements make no reason to keep that building. There's no way that building was going to be reused in its current situation by Mathacton in its current state. So all those things, although I question if we will even need the property, but I want to exhaust the, exhaust that over the next eight, nine months, but certainly, we don't need the physical building. The question about if, do we support the, the importance of Audubon, certainly talked about that last week, it's been talked about, that's why we worked so hard with Lower Providence to try to figure out if there was something that they wanted to do with the building. It's, it's the right thing to do, we're making the right decision to, at least in my opinion. I'm making, I'm comfortable with my decision to decide to unfortunately take Audubon down.
Other comments from the board? Ms. Rocco?
Yeah, I just, you know, I, I was not at the meeting last week when we spoke about this, but obviously, we spoke about it at other meetings, and, you know, I am struggling with the decision of, and I just want the public to know that this does take a lot of thought and consideration from every one of us, but, you know, to, the vote tonight is to either yes or no to this. So if someone does not support this, the vote is a no. You know, I, I think there may be some of us that are more supportive of selling the property with the building on it for financial reasons. So I do just want to make it clear of, you know, what, what we're exactly voting on tonight. And I'm sure, like I said, that that was made clear last week, but just wanted to mention that.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Ms. Kangaro?
No, just briefly, like when we talked about reviewing, looking at leasing out to other, I know the public had said that, we did that through Lower Providence. You have to remember that the building has $12 million of repair that needs to be done. So if we need to lease it, we're just not in that, we looked at that and explored it, and we would have to really do those repairs to those buildings. And that's not something that, it's a taxpayer, it goes for the taxpayers against them also. And we just talk about charter a lot because if that does, if we did sell it and charter school did have it, again, it's against the taxpayers also because we would need to help them fix that $12 million building to even make it function. So those are two big main reasons, and I do think that by using our capital reserve to knock down that building, we're going to increase the value of it, and we're going to look at it, just like Ms. Rocco said today, that we're going to look at the educational purpose, look at where we are and what's going to cost us, and then together, we go to the next step. And that's what we have to authorize Dr. Zerby and his staff to do. So I'm for this vote.
Anybody else? My last comment is just, I know there is some nice historic architecture within the building, so if anyone can think of a good use for architectural salvage of some 1920s woodwork, I would like to hear about it. All right, so that is the motion on the table. Item 13G, the disposition of Audubon Elementary School. And all in favor? And opposed? Okay, that's six to one, passes. Thank you very much. Okay, now we have the dates for board members' calendars. Next month, on a Monday, December 5th, we have the reorganization and regular meeting here in the Arcola Auditorium. Now, does anyone have anything for old or new business?
Madam President, one clarification. The, for the vote that was just occurred in terms of Audubon Elementary School, I believe it was actually seven to nothing. Were there any negative votes in terms?
Yeah.
Oh, Ms. Perdue, okay, thank you.
Okay. Good?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, anything, anyone for any old or new business tonight? Ms. Rocco?
I know Ms. Kelly brought this up, but just good luck to Eagleville. I heard, I've been hearing and reading about the choir competition, so, so good luck to them.
Well, we don't need luck, we need votes on the 29th. Ms. Kelly, so the 29th, get on your computer, tell all your friends, and do it often. We want, as many votes will get us there, so.
All right, November 29th. Oh, Mr. Winters, yes.
Yeah, I don't have anything prepared, but Liz and myself both participated in the PSBA conference earlier this month, actually end of last month and early of this month in the Poconos, and were able to meet many contacts associated with the association. Additionally, that Saturday, Ms. Perdue and I participated as delegates in the Assembly for the PSBA litigation, or what's the right word? Legislative, thank you. Legislative agenda, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Old business, new business? Okay. Now it's time for courtesy of the floor. This is an opportunity for residents to make comments on matters that are or may be before the board. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. We may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments. Anyone for courtesy of the floor tonight?
Before I start, if there's anyone that's under 18, I would ask you guys to leave. So if you're under 18.
Could you please state your name and municipality, please?
Amy Sorrello, Lower Providence.
I want to make sure that, are you guys on over 18?
Ma'am, what is your matter before the board?
Some unanswered emails. So I have, I have something to present. Can you stop the clock real quick while we're discussing this? I have something to present, but I don't necessarily think it's for kids that are under 18. It's regarding one of the books in our library.
And just to be clear, this meeting is broadcast online, so although there may not be anyone visibly in the auditorium, there certainly could be individuals watching at home. I'm not indicating them what you can or can't say as a result of that. You asked the question if anyone present in the room.
Well, I'm going to say. Anyone that's watching, if you have young children with you, to put them in another room.
Well, if you are concerned about what you're about to say, what I can offer you is an opportunity to meet with me.
Oh, now you want to meet with me? Now you want to meet with me? Nine weeks and 11 emails, and now you want to meet with me?
I'm not, ma'am, I'm not sure who you are.
Okay, I'm going to tell you. Amy Sorrello, you can start now, you can restart that, if you can, please. Amy Sorrello, Lower Providence. This is exactly why, man. I'm here today to talk about some sexually explicit books that I presented last October. It took until March of 2022 to get a response from Chey Regina of who approves the library books at the high school. I finally found out that that is Kara Wodenberg. I finally contacted her on September 19th regarding This Book is Gay, asking, ultimately asking her if there was anything that could be done to review the library resources that have graphic sexual content and sexual abuse. Nine weeks and 11 emails later, I still have not received a response from Kara Wodenberg, Jamie Gravenese, Chey Regina, or David Zerby. This Book is Gay describes sex acts and how, sex apps and how to create your own account in detail. It goes on to say that if people want casual sex, then Grindr is a must. Grindr is a sexual, sex app for adults, it's not for high school students. This book also says the benefits of a sex app are obvious: quick, easy, and uncomplicated sex. Then it says if you're horny and want to do a sex meet, meet the trick in a public place for a drink first. All these examples are for adults, not for high school students, and this book is in the high school library. Just a few pages later, the book says, something they didn't teach you in school is that in order to be able to cum at all, you and your partner may need to finish with a handy. A good handy is all about the wrist action. Rub the head of his cock back and forth with your hand. Try different speeds and pressures until he responds positively. Also, there is additionally a description of a married adult and a child engaged in a sexual situation. Are any of you okay with this kind of content and this kind of language?
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, thanks.
Jim Malik, War Sester, you should be ashamed of what you just did. You should be ashamed. Don't sit there with your smirk. This is the problem. You're up here doing all the wrong things, and when you should be addressing things like this. Things like this happened here because you took over. You're in charge. This is on you. I feel for her. I feel for a kid that's got to read that crap. And what do you have to say? Thank you for your comment. You should resign. I mean, sick. Sick. Paul, thanks for putting yourself on the record. Thank you for putting yourself on the record. Now we have both of you on the record, I think that's great. Paul, you said we don't need any more money for education. Brian had suggested using the money for education, and I go, oh, no, we got plenty. That's a first. That's a first. So you had a decision between money for kids and a waste of planetarium, and you picked the planetarium. That's, that's great for me, if you decide to run again. Ms. Kangaro, your comments, you're forgetting one thing. I like you a lot, but it's called fiduciary responsibility. You know, I know you want to do a planetarium because it's just a great thing, but you don't look at the alternatives. You did not, and I already got confirmation from Dr. Zerby that you guys didn't look at any alternatives. No VR headsets, nothing. Bingo. You have an obligation to us as taxpayers, it's called fiduciary responsibility, and you blew it. It's a problem. Where are the studies that support building a waste of planetarium? Show me a study. There's none, I looked for them, zero. So you're doing it because you want to, because. This is the problem with the board. Dave, your actions, you say they don't impact the budget? They do. They do impact tax increases. If you got extra money, that's the less we got to pay in taxes, it's common sense. You have to go, no, this doesn't impact anything? Certainly does. You know, where do you think that money comes from? That grant money? That's tax money we pay either federal or state, so taxpayers have to pay. It's not free money, we don't print it up. The foundation money can be used for other things that are more important. The $700,000 grant can be used for things that are important. But the only thing that's important is shutting people down who talk about sex books in the library. You got to go. Thanks.
Anybody else for courtesy of the floor?
Brian Earnshaw, Lower Providence, just follow up on some of the comments and responses about the budgetary, budget transfers. I have this scheduled here, and I'm not sure how, $50,000 for repairs for temporary parking, $24,000 for facilities condition assessment, $6,500 for strategic planning postcards, $9,000 for annual report, and $5,500 for a warrior sports banner, enhance education, but maybe I'm missing something. Dr. Zerby commented that the capital reserve is not associated with a tax increase. You need to remember the source of that capital reserve. $16 million in budget surpluses over the past six years, none returned to taxpayers. Where did it go? To the capital reserve. For eight to 10 years, money was set aside for the Shenandoah property tax litigation into escrow, resulting in higher tax increases on taxpayers. The case gets resolved, where's that money go? $7.2 million to the capital reserve. So think of the funding source, it is associated with tax increase. Are any board members concerned with the ever-increasing spending proposed by the administration? Every meeting I go to, it seems like spending keeps going up as a new topic. Take a step back, think about what's happened. Here's my view. There's been a lot of excess money collected from taxpayers. Now it needs to get spent. I mentioned the $16 million in budget surpluses. Mr. Werner commented, I was on the board for two years during that timeframe, I was. I advocated for returning the excess surplus to taxpayers. You advocated for spending it. The Shenandoah Reserve, additionally, $7.2 million not returned to taxpayers. This year, I provide This year, I provided you a roadmap to a tax decrease. Taxes were increased, that's a $1.8 million delta, and Dr. Zerby is now showing that he's predicting surpluses for this year, and we're only in November. All this has led to increased spending. $50 million for a new Arrowhead school that opened less than 70% utilized. Arcola remains 60% utilized. A million dollars in legal fees over budget last year. The MEA contract renewed early. I forget what the percentage increases are, but it was, it was sizable. The MESSPAC contract is a 12.4% increase in year two. Tonight, you approve $530,000 to rip down a building. $1.1 million for a planetarium. The Finance Committee meetings speak to the first student contract renewal for another six years. What are the rate increases? 8% in the next two years, 4.25% for four years after that? No mention of taking the contract after bid. All this additional revenue is coming, all this additional spending is coming. Where's the long-term forecast? You talk about one-off, it's going to cost us $200,000, $700,000. You got to put all this together into a long-term forecast and get Dr. Zerby and the administration to put all this new spending on the table. Every week, it can't just be coming drips and drabs, you need a complete picture. Just because you have Room One in the Act One index for a big tax increase, doesn't mean you have to do it. Yes, I know, I'm out of time, Dr. Zerby, I'm done, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else for courtesy of the floor tonight? Seeing none, any final comments from board members? Ms. Perdue?
I just have a comment in reference to, I believe it was the first speaker in reference to books in the library, and I'm not sure where her emails went to, and I know sometimes I don't get the emails, but from my board emails, and the reason why I bring this up is because she has approached me directly at Policy Committee in reference to this, and I informed her at that time that I have not received one email from her, I'm not sure if other board members have. I have received four total emails from her, all about, on the subject of masking, masking the meetings at the schools, and mask exception forms. I believe those were the emails that we received from her. I believe a policy when approached about the discussion of books in the library, I connected her with Mr. Regina, and I just want to know, highlight that there is a process for books in our library, and I'll have Mr. Regina speak on it, and information provided to her as far as how to proceed.
Yeah, thanks, Ms. Perdue. We've reviewed that policy with Ms. Sorrelli before, Policy 139, and we've gone over the proper protocol for requesting any type of removal of any resources in the school district. So that's been gone over a number of times now with Ms. Sorrelli.
Any other comments from board?
Just quickly, I wanted to thank you, Ms. Drummond, for your service as president. It's not always easy to stand up there, or excuse me, sit up there and be the voice of the board. And I wanted to wish everybody at this table, which Mr. Armstrong mentioned, are for volunteers. The board is our volunteers, so I do want to thank you for your service. And Mr. Regina and Dr. Zerby, although you are not volunteers, thank you for all that you do, and hope you have a wonderful Thanksgiving to our board reps. Thank you for staying here the whole evening, and I wish you a wonderful five days off from school, so.
Thank you. Any other wrap-up comments? Dr. Zerby?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. And I think it's important for the board and the public to recognize that we need, we need, we use the word, you know, fiduciary responsibility, each one of you have been very deliberate in your fiduciary responsibility, in addition to the oversight that my administration I have had. But, but what we, what we don't do, okay, is, is have our singular focus on, you know, taxation, singular focus on spend or not to spend. Our focus has been on how do we make improvements for the students today and the students tomorrow? And, and it's really about making sure that our focus is aligned with what our mission is in the district. I don't know anywhere in the mission statement, I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure it doesn't say spend, it doesn't use the word spend, doesn't use the word tax, it doesn't use the word refund, it doesn't use, it doesn't use all those words that, that we seem to be thrown at us in a conversation. And being the human beings and the conscious nature that I know you are, it's, I know it's challenging you, for you to hear that week in and week out, but I'm asking you to continue to be diligent and prudent in your, in your vision for making our district the best that it can be, while being fiscally responsible and fiscally prudent. Because if we put the fiscally part first, your decisions will be a whole lot different. And it's, and it's not about managing the taxes, it's not about managing, if, if our mission was to manage the taxation of the school district or the community so that we could provide a, a school or an education, no. The mission talks about providing an education first. And so I hope that you keep that in mind, and, and equally important, I hope that you take away that, that this message and the things that you are doing are in the, in the right direction to make improvements here in Meth Acton School District. And lastly, I want you all to have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Anything else? Can I get a motion to adjourn? Ms. Reese, a second. Mr. Winters, thank you so much, this meeting is adjourned.